Okay, well, it's 6 o'clock, 6:01 actually, so let's get started here. We should begin with the approval of the orders. Have any board members yet seen those orders?
I don't believe so.
Carrie, I had talked to you earlier today, and you had stated that there was a big payment to the school. Did you want to explain that?
Yeah, so we are cutting the check for the school payment this time around, and I believe it's a $2.5 million check. And that was discussed in the last, in the last board meeting. We talked about not giving them an early payment of a million, and we're paying them outright this time for their due date. So that's in the orders.
Was there anything else in the orders, Carrie, that we should talk about tonight before board members come in on an individual basis?
I'm thinking that there isn't anything outstanding, nothing different. Yeah, nothing comes to mind that's a red flag of any sort.
Questions from my colleagues in regards to the orders? Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve, April 28th and May the 5th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Love to approve.
Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John Paul for discussion. And for the record, this is for the April 28th and May 5th meeting. All those in favor of approving these two meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye. All abstain, Josh, from the 28th, I wasn't present.
Okay, so motion passes five to zero for the May 5th meeting. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention for the April 28th meeting minutes. Okay, and if board members feel comfortable and have time, if you come in on an individual basis and sign the orders in those minutes, that'd be appreciated. Were there any questions from the floor, any public comment at this time, anyone who wishes to speak who is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go right to Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So, we'll start off with the packet for the board. Number one is the updated meeting schedule and committee items. So, the past two, this has been sent to all the department heads as well, so they have an idea of what's on the, what's on the committee agendas, if they need to add anything, just to let me know, or if they can let me know.
Bill, this is Mary.
Hi.
Hi, under Highway, I've got two to add.
Okay.
From our last meeting.
One is for, to review the stormwater plan that Andres submitted for this year. I don't, I think that was sent over to Highway. And the second is to review Byron's list of proposed projects for 2020.
Okay.
Christopher.
About those?
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Two, three, and four are on the agenda for new business, old business. Number five is from Carrie, it's the current budget status sheets.
All right, so we'll hold off on two through five until the respective times.
Yep, and then additionally, I sent you all, all the board members an email about three hours ago with the additional items that inevitably come in after the packets go out. So, the first three items are three individual liquor licenses for the Holiday Inn. And the police department has reviewed these.
Okay, this is Mary, since the police department has approved, I will move that we approve the three liquor licenses for the Holiday Inn.
Motion by Mary to approve the three liquor licenses for the Holiday Inn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe DiNardo, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
All abstain, Josh.
With one abstention, motion passes four to zero with one abstention. And I've signed them, so we'll leave them for, leave them for, the rest of you, it's your convenience. What else you got for us, Bill?
D is from Mary and Sharon, it's their list of 2020 scholarship awards.
Well, this can come under committee business, Sharon and I reviewed the scholarship applications, and this is our recommend to the board.
Do you want to run through that now, Mary?
Sure. Yeah, my screen just went blank, okay. Sharon, have you got them in front of you?
I can get them in about two seconds.
No, no, I got them, I got them, it's okay. So, we, there were eight applications. We determined that each should get some kind of a scholarship. We are recommending, and we are recommending that awards of $3,000 each go to Dylan Rousell and Alexander Stute, both of Rutland High, and scholarships of $1,500 each for Ethan Course, Austin May, Amy McGee, Tyler Regula, Kathleen Sunderland, and Taylor Surething. Ethan, Amy, Kathleen, and Taylor all go to Rutland High. Austin May is Rutland High Stafford and homeschooled, and Tyler Regula is at Mill River.
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by John Paul to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, Mary.
Thanks, Mary and Sharon.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, it's a lot of work, and nice job, and thank the, we want to thank the taxpayers and the voters for approving those scholarships every year, it's a big help to these seniors, so.
Yeah, this was the $15,000, so that's why we were able to give very substantial scholarships to folks, so thank you voters.
Excellent. Bill, what else you got for us?
Okay, the next one is letter E. It's a sewer allocation request from Walnuck Properties. They are on Sewered Road, they are one of the companies that we identified that has an account with Rutland City, is using the sewer system but did not have an allocation approved on file. So, I spoke with the owner, and we came up with a number that meets that. So, he submitted the application and his payment for it, so that is his formal request.
So, to my colleague, sitting here on my desk is an application for an increase in allocation with a $450 check from Walnuck Properties made out to the town of Rutland. Would someone like to put that in a motion to accept his allocation increase?
I will so move, and to, yeah, I think authorize, who are we authorizing to sign, Bill or Josh?
The application actually doesn't require a signature, it just requires an approval, and then it just goes.
Okay, okay, so I move to approve.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Sharon made the second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, I'm for it, Josh, I was a little slow.
That's right, Joe, I was too fast. So, there was a five to zero motion passes to increase the allocation, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, continue on, sir.
So, on that same track for, just for a minute, I have heard from almost all of the companies and individuals who sent letters to for withdrawing allocations and for needing them, several people that have, have no objection to the withdrawal, so we're going to get back several of those. A couple are going to need a discussion about what to do with them, but I think that should be fairly easy to do. And then there are a couple more new applications coming, and then we just have a couple, they're going to be left, that are going to kind of figure out what we're going to do with them, but in all, it's moving forward. Spent a lot of time on the phone since sending out those letters, but we're making, we're making good progress. The next item was received, Josh and I both got a phone call today from a person informing the town that there's a real estate opportunity available, and we wanted to pass it along for your information, unless Josh, you want to do, to expand on it?
Move, receive on, move, receive on file.
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, so that was an interesting conversation today. All right, Bill, what else you have?
The last thing is a draft letter, if you want to review it or any feedback. I did get the 2019 usage against sewer disparage usage from the city, and found we have several businesses that are exceeding their allocation, some, somewhat substantially, so we need to notify them of that, and so they can apply for an increase. So, I put together a letter to send to those companies under that criteria.
Okay, did everyone see this cover letter that Bill drafted?
Looks good to me.
I did not.
Yeah, John Paul, you said you saw that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I said did not.
I think it's fine, Sharon, do you want two weeks to review it, we can talk about it at the next meeting?
That's fine with me, I mean, what do the rest of you feel? If the rest of you have read it, I guess I trust you.
Well, when we see other letters, we knew who they were going to, so I would prefer to, I just assume wait two weeks and look for a list of who is going to receive this letter. The letter looks fine.
Okay, that's fine. The next meeting is the one where we had given a date as the notice for the hearing for any of the individuals with allocations that we're going to withdraw, that have no, that have no objection, that aren't going to be part of it. Have one or two that do want to be a part of it, but it shouldn't be complicated, so I can put together the lists, this can be sent to for the next, for the next meeting.
That's good, thank you, and thanks, Bill, for getting on this. This is Bill's work, and then Water Sewer Committee took a look at this, and it's nice to know we're finally bringing some of these uses and allocations in and reviewing them.
Yeah, it's, and I've worked a lot with Rutland City and a lot with Howard, and we have found several of the ones on the list that were orphaned allocations, we have found who they belong to, and that they are actually for active properties, and we were able to match some of them up and make some people pretty happy, so we've come a long way, but we still got, there's still some more to go, but I'll include that list with the next time. And the last thing that I have is Royals, needs to, it needs to schedule a, the fire alarm inspection here, it needs a couple people to come in the building and, and do that, do that work, they want to schedule it in the next five to six weeks, and looking for feedback and permission to do that.
Yeah, I would be in favor, but it's essential work that needs to get done, so.
As long as they abide by whatever our current, at the times, requirements are for people in the building, they should be fine.
Okay.
And they should not take away appointment schedule, you know, they shouldn't be considered an appointment that's scheduled for the clerk's office.
No.
Right.
Yeah, I'll ask Carrie what, I'll find out from them what day they want to come and when they're going to need, and we'll, we'll kind of narrow down a good time for them to show up, so.
Okay.
That is all I have.
Do any of my colleagues have anything for Bill Sweet at this time? All right, Billy, thanks for your help. Carrie Clark, Detective and Treasurer.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I took myself off of mute. I don't have much to talk about, just wanted to give an update on our very busy week last week. Of course, it was tax time, and taxes were due on Sunday, and we accepted payments yesterday as on time. Just before Susan and I left, we did an update, because we put all of that, we processed all of the payments, and good news, so we are just at around 2.5% left to collect, and that is not including any postmarks or any payments that came, we're still processing payments over this week and accepting those postmarks this week. So, this is really great news, we collected everything except for 2.5%, and that is looking over the past years. We have reports for, I think, up to five years past, and that is the average, and that's what, around the percentage of what we usually hand over to Jim as delinquents, so this is great, great news. Also, yeah.
In other words, you're saying that the town of Rutland, 97.5% of taxes were paid on time?
Yeah, isn't that great?
I think it's fantastic.
It is fantastic. We were so busy with, you should have seen the mail, it was crazy, it was awesome.
Good job, John.
Yeah, we really, we, the town residents rocked it this time, so we're very proud. And then, let's see, oh, I wanted to tell you about how appointments are going. So, we started taking appointments last week, and we started booking them for the 15th, and we are booking into the last week of May currently for researchers. Next week, I'm going to look at how it is going, because next week will be the full week of researchers coming in, and I'm thinking probably on Wednesday, reevaluate to see if we can up the amount of researchers in, amount of appointments during the day. So, we're all set to go in Town Hall, we have gloves, we have masks, our plexiglass came in, we have a plan, so we are ready, and people are happy that we are letting them in, and I'm happy that they're happy, so we're ready. And then the last thing was, we were getting dogs ready for, because that due date has passed, the extension has passed, and we are getting ready to print up the list of the dogs in the town that have yet to be registered for handover to Ed Dumas and Ted Washburn. We are going to get that finalized tomorrow and send that off to them with the warrant that goes along with it. So, that is all that I have, and everything is looking good in, in the town office.
Questions or comments for Carrie?
Good job, Carrie.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I would, I would just, as one board member, encourage you to, like you said, look as soon as possible at reevaluating the number of people on a daily basis. The governor, once again, did come out with some guidelines yesterday, which loosened some retail location restrictions with how many people can be in a facility and so on. So, I would, in my personal opinion, safely, your office could handle more than two appointments a day, and I think that by the sign of how many appointments you have now, it might be warranted to increase that number sooner than later, so that would be my two cents, but we want to make sure we do it, and keeping everyone safe in the building, but, you know, it's, it's good that we're, we're moving in the right direction.
We are.
Any comments from any other board members? Okay, Carrie, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Barbara Noes, Pulling Town Planning Commission Chair.
Hello there.
Hi, Barb.
Hi. One thing this evening, the planning commission would like to make an expenditure, if possible. It's for Stormwater Ordinance Interactive Online Map. It's an idea that came out of our public meeting last October, and then we asked Andres and his company to put one together, and February, they gave us a quote of $1,500, and just in the last week, we got the map. It has some bugs in it that still need to be worked out, but I think it's going to work pretty well for any residents, they can just put their addresses in on the map, or just hover around their parcel and get information about which sections of the ordinance applies to them, and also get a direct link to the ordinance, so it will help those residents, and also, I think, will help Bill a lot as he administers this, and maybe even Howard as well, as they get questions. So, we don't have an invoice from Andres yet, we want to work on some of these bugs, so I just wanted to get your take on whether we should wait till the next fiscal year, the planning commission budget can handle this this year, but if you want us to split the payments up, or whatever your suggestions are.
What's, what's the select board feel about that?
This is Mary, a quick question to Bill, how many requests are we getting right now for these permits?
We have not, we're still waiting for our first one.
Okay. So, I think this can wait until the next fiscal year.
I agree, we put a freeze on, and to keep breaking it, just doesn't make sense.
So, Barb, why don't you bring it to us in July, when the new, the new fiscal year comes, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
What else you have for us, anything?
No, that's it.
Very good.
I've got to head to.
I said stay safe.
Okay, got to head to Castleton, see you later.
Yeah, thanks. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director, anything?
Yep, I do. What would you like me to do with the governor's new information about being able to play basketball and tennis at our parks? It seems to be that everyone is following the traffic flow at Northwood, just curious as to what your thoughts are of putting that stuff back up and allowing people to do that.
What's the, what's the opinion of the board on that?
I'd like to hear from our health officer.
Where'd JP go? Hello?
You there, John?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You know, I think we should be following the original recommendations.
Yep.
I still don't see, I still don't see where we've met the criteria that was established, and to my way of thinking, these decisions on opening are political decisions, they're not health-based decisions. Yeah, I concur with JP.
I do too.
Okay, so we'll revisit it in two weeks?
Sure.
The other question is, I'd like to try to schedule a rec committee meeting with the things that Bill outlined in the meeting agenda, and obviously, opening Northwood pool could be added to that, if we could meet before the next select board meeting on Zoom, that would be acceptable if the, my committee members are able to do that.
Okay, so John Paul and Sharon, they'll get with you offline, Mike, about that?
It's fine. Other than that, we're on, I'm on my third round of mowing, so the grass is growing, things have been going very smoothly up there, and, you know, everything else is kind of plugging along and just waiting for, you know, to be able to do more work and more things, that's all.
We see a lot, we seeing a lot of traffic up there, Mike, people walking and hiking and so on?
A lot more. There's, there's, yeah, when I've been up there, the, you know, I was up there today, and there were four or five cars in the upper, that upper parking lot for people walking and what have you. So, yes, there's, there's been an increase, because they can drive in now. Byron might have a better idea, he's there a little bit earlier in the morning, whether or not he sees a good flow going up there, I haven't caught anybody trying to go down back yet, that's a bonus. So, they're behaving, you know, they're, they're listening to this, looking at the signs and parking in the right spot.
Okay, great, anything for Mike Rowe, folks? All right, Mike, thanks for everything.
Yep.
Let's go to Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
I don't really have a whole lot for you guys tonight, other than to say that I didn't announce it at the last special board meeting, but since the last regular board meeting, we have signed off on the easement for Chazano Drive with the Warwick's, and so we now have a easement that we can plan for in the future to make that connection to Northwood to Chazano Drive. Other than that, Walt and I are working on the sewer manhole inventory, we did most of the north end of town today, there's two more manholes to locate and move to the rural, and then probably the Lori Heights area. Other than that, we're getting along just fine and continuing to keep, you know, small things taken care of.
Byron, is the state, are they starting in the west Rutland end of things in terms of the repavement and construction of Business Four, is, are things happening on the west side first?
Yes, there's two different contractors over there on two different projects. Hutchins is working on the, that's the Rutland Town to West Rutland section, starts at the jug handle and comes back to about the town office. I guess they started with some dirt work over there in West Rutland. Pike Industries also, paving contract for the jug handle partway down 133 and outdoor Castleton, shortways, and I believe they're going to be milling there tomorrow, so I guess that's under motion, that project also.
Okay, great. At our special board meeting, we, we had a discussion around a contract, independent contractor, does some, some paving for the town, is the board prepared to talk about that tonight?
I am.
You mean plowing?
I'm sorry.
Plowing, right?
Plowing.
What did I say?
Paving.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say plowing.
Okay.
So, I heard Mary speak up, Sharon, did you say something?
I did.
What were you going to say, Sharon?
Well, you know, I, I have been thinking about this very seriously, and from what Vi has said to us, he keeps, you know, he's having issues with the gentleman, but he keeps saying he can work with him. In light of that, I just feel that, and this is just, this is my opinion, that we give him a final chance, that Vi be directed to, if he has a problem, that he give him a written final warning, and we, and that's it, it's over, but. But I was very confused at the last meeting because in one hand, By was saying it's been a problem and in the other hand, he was saying, I can work with him. So I guess I'm not sure exactly what he wanted us to do. And I think as the person that really is in charge of those, even though it's a contractual one, I guess that's where I'm coming from. And I'll listen to what the rest of you think.
Yeah, John, Paul, did you say something? Am I hearing things?
Not yet.
Did you want, did you want to speak since I called on you?
Well, I'm just waiting to hear what the other board members think.
Okay. Joey or Mary, anything to say?
Well, you know, we discussed this quite a bit at our other meeting. We discussed it at the highway committee meeting. I don't know if I have anything more to add. And I just don't know what to do with this at this point.
Yeah, so I could speak for a moment and then Joe and John Paul will get you guys. You know, I've been all along, I've heard both sides of it. I understand the concerns from both parties. Certainly, I think my record would show that for many years now, I've been a Byron Hathaway fan. And I just think that we're in an opportunity where we can show some grace and give a second chance to a contractor who's been with us a long time on a very short leash, I must add. And I had this conversation as Mr. Hubbard called me offline. And I told him that if I was to support him, I would want the board to, you know, make sure that he understood. If you're a minute late one time, it's, you know, it's unacceptable and your relationship with the town at that point as a contractor is over. But there's a history here, they've been with us a long time. And so I would be in favor of giving this individual one more chance on a very short leash and with an understanding that this is it, there's no coming back. If there's a tardiness or a mishap, then we're going to go in a different direction.
Well, what about if he gets hit by a falling iceberg on his way to work? Are you going to fire him for that?
There's always, there's always a what if, but, you know. Something like that, John Paul, I bet we could research to see if it actually happened or not.
Okay.
Miss your thought JP, and then I'll say what I have to say. Sorry about that.
No, 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 I thought I was stepping on you, Joe.
No, I stepped on you, go ahead.
Okay. So, I mean, after listening to Sharon and Josh, I guess I would support giving him another chance.
So my only concern with this, and it's something I've brought up at every level we've discussed this, another chance means another full year of, or full winter season of snow removal and road care for the town. You cannot pull the plug on this in the middle of November, December, January, whenever the occurs. So what Josh is saying, that this is his last chance and if he messes up, then he's gone. It's not going to happen. He's pretty much guaranteed one more year of plowing because Byron is not going to be able to pull a rabbit out of his hat in the middle of January and find somebody to take over. And that's my concern, is that if we do this, we may be putting things at risk where, whatever, you know. It's, that's the part you got to think about. This is a full season probationary period and there's no going back once you say one more chance. I mean, I give everybody multiple chances I can, that'd be fine. I think that Byron has done that and done that over the past couple, three years. So that's just food for thought, you know, in the direction we go. Because, like I say, once we make this decision, it's a full plowing season for next year. You're not going to change, you know, in midstream.
I think if Byron said it once, he said it 10 times at the last meeting, that he could work with him. And that just keeps reverberating in my mind.
And he has been over the last three years. He keep working with him and that's how we've got to this point. That's how we got where things keep going bad.
Well, Byron's comments were not in reference to past performance. It was in reference to if he were to continue. And he said over and over again that he could work with him.
I will have to have a very serious sit-down talk with Tim in relation to going forward next year. And if you're in agreement with the one last chance, then we will go forward with that. And I'm sure Tim will probably respond very favorably, seeing how he's had conversations with Josh in regards to this whole matter.
I had a very direct conversation with him as well.
Well, I think, and I don't know if Tim's on the line listening or not, but I think it comes down to, you know, the ones of us on this board that are supporting Tim Hubbard for another year, we're going to have egg on our face if this goes bad. And you're going to have every right, Byron, to look us in the face next winter and say, told you so. But I feel, like I said earlier, you know, another chance, we'll see how it goes. And I also don't necessarily believe, this is a nice job for somebody. And if it didn't work out with the Hubberts, there might be a subcontractor out there that could pick up the rest of the route for the rest of the season. We don't, we're not guaranteed to know that this, that, you know, like Joey, you had mentioned that we're, this is it, we're in for the year. There might be another contractor out there that could pick it up, like a local carpenter in Costin or something like that if we have issues again next year.
Yeah, well, you could jump right out there and go buy a seven-yard truck with a plow and a sander on it and spend 30, 40, $50,000. Not everybody can just jump out and do that. And that's what you're looking at, real-life dollars to, for somebody to gear up and have one or two trucks. You're talking a substantial thing. And it's not like you're just going to go out at your local used car lot and find a plow truck set up, ready to go. They're out there, but they're expensive. So I'll go with whichever way the majority of the board goes. I'm just putting in the realistic side.
Any final comments from my colleagues?
No, I have to agree with Josh. I still think you could pick up Carpenter and Costin or one of the others. I don't think we're bound. And I think if he doesn't live up to expectations, that we could find somebody.
This is Mary, then you better make sure that the contract you offered to him is clear and has all of these conditions in it.
Isn't that something your committee would take care of?
Well, we thought that we had taken care of it, but apparently not.
And how did you take care of the terms of the contract?
JP, we supported our road commissioner and when we suggested that the contract not be offered to him again. So I might not be the best person to review all of the conditions in the contract that's supposed to be offered to him now.
But Mary, Byron kept saying, I can work with him, which puts the burden onto us that says, we're saying, no, you can't, Byron, when he's told us he can. So that's where I'm, that's what threw me off. I don't know how the others feel, but I'm not prepared to take, we have no letters to him that state what he's done wrong or warnings or anything. I mean, I run a facility, Josh, you run a business, JP, you run a business. If somebody does-
No, 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 I'm retired.
You're tired for sure. But that's the way I feel.
All right.
Well, you also, you miss the fact that Byron has a folder that he could give to any one of us that wants to read it and explain what's gone on over the last several winters. But nobody took the time to get that and, you know, read it and see what's been going on. So you make the choice you make and live with it.
Well, I would say to that, Joey, with all due respect, that we weren't, you know, that was never brought to our attention nor was it brought to a meeting that said, here's the folder, here's the copies. This is the first I'm hearing of it now, at the last hour here.
No, it's been, it's been out there, Josh, it's been out there for months. It's just that, it's very difficult to take a job away from a town resident, somebody that's done it. You know, you don't ever want to do this. So we're going to make every chance and everything possible to go on. And like I say, if it doesn't go right, you know, we'll deal with it, I guess. Or Byron will deal with it because that's where you're going to put the burden of what's going on and being by his lap.
I don't have a problem.
But, so-
Then it should have never gotten to this stage where the board has to make the decision. All right? This should have been either handled differently or whatever. Because you put it in my lap as a board member and as a committee member, and we've discussed it six ways to Sunday. So now we've got to this point where we're kind of going backwards. So I don't get it.
Byron, you have a standard contract that you use for all these subcontractors?
This town has never had a written contract with any of its private contracts.
There's no contract. This is all verbal, there's nothing written, nobody signs anything.
It's not all verbal because a few years ago, we had in writing a payment schedule and so on to these contractors this board approved. So there is something, there's an agreement on paper somewhere as to how these people function and operate and get paid. You brought it into our-
That's on our end, Josh. But there's nothing in writing that says you have to have this kind of equipment, you have to be able, you know, you have to, a written contract, and JP and Mary are the best to say this, is something that the, everybody gets, it's the same for everybody, and it's signed. And you either do it on a yearly basis or a couple of years, however you do it. And the town has never done written contracts. We have done paperwork to tell them how we're going to pay them and how they're going to get stuff done. But there is no contract that I know of or I've ever seen where it's spelled out in writing how things are going to go. Because we're a small town, we work with our neighbors, our friends, people we know, and you just take it for granted, they're going to do what they tell you. Now, we're kind of getting away from that because now you want to talk contracts. Then it gets more business-like.
Well, there's no reason why we don't have contracts for all these subcontractors. In fact, shame on us that we didn't do this in the past. I mean, we're paying, this is a huge responsibility that we give these operators. We pay them a tremendous amount of money year after year to do this. And we should have a contract in place for each one of these subcontractors. So shame on us that we haven't done that. So going forward-
Before you take us all out to the woodshed, we probably ought to check because at the risk of having a senior moment, I remember written contracts, they were not anything extensive, but they set forth, for example, insurance requirements and things like that.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. We have standards and requirements here. I swear that we have something on paper.
We certainly should.
And every contractor has put their name on that and you have that. Because if you had that information and it gives a level of performance that's expected, then we probably wouldn't have wasted an hour the other night and half an hour tonight on this.
Byron, do you have that?
I have several letters that I have written in the past to these guys explaining our expectations, but none of that-
Yeah, those letters would set forth the terms. But I also thought you had responses from every contractor with regard to insurance. And when you went to the flat rate, you also had a pretty detailed showing of that at that time as well.
That's correct. We have a detailed showing of what the payment system is. And we do get a, and we do receive every year updated certificates of insurance from these guys. But that's about the extent of the paperwork that we've ever asked for from these guys. You know, I'm sure we probably appreciate it if we had written contracts. And perhaps that's what I should do over the next couple, three weeks, is sit down and draft up some type of a contract and let you guys look it over.
I think that's a good idea, By.
I don't think you have to reinvent the wheel. I'm sure Kevin's done this for other municipalities.
Yeah, we have one that we have used for their paving contract for the last couple of years. And I think I can take that and tweak it just a little bit. And put expectations in there, whether it's in the form of a letter as an addendum to that contract or whatever, and present that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so at this time, is there a motion to be made in either direction to retain the Hubbard services or to release them for next year?
I make the motion that we retain the Hubbard's based on that he lives up to expectations, which are to be there on time. When he does not, then there would be an immediate end of the contract. And we need to draw up a contract.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
I second it.
Oh, second by John Paul. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, for the record, so I get this correct, the motion passed four to one.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Byron?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Byron, I have a question. I have one question, Josh, for Byron.
Go ahead, Joey.
Byron, the stormwater permit, whatever we needed for the cold storage building, what happened with that and where are we with that?
That was put off by the board until July 1. And will be brought up at that time.
And they did not, they weren't willing to back off on the requirements at all?
No.
Okay.
The requirements, the stormwater rules are what they are. Apparently, I had misinterpreted what I had told from others compared to that, and it was a mistake was made. So I'll have, I'll take ownership of that, you know. So had I known a bit better about that, I wouldn't have gotten involved.
Okay, so we're technically going to spend more for a permit than the building?
What it sounds like.
Okay. All right, thanks, Byron.
That's almost the good news. The bad news is we're going to have to get a permit every time you put a shovel in the ground up there.
And that's not the shovel, JP, it's when you put a roof over the shovel.
Oh, okay, like a hat?
Yeah, you put a hat on the shovel and you got to get a permit because you're now creating an impervious surface.
Well, I thought it was master-
My head does that just fine without the hat.
Yeah.
I was going to say, it was masterful, Byron, how you drafted that email and stated that, you know, this is getting so out of hand that, you know, every time the umbrella goes up on the lifeguard chair, we're going to have to get a permit.
I thought that was good.
No. No, all right.
Maybe that should- This is Mary, a suggestion on, I think what we did on that was, didn't we table it until the upcoming fiscal year or did we vote on it?
I think we tabled it to talk about it after July 1, Mary.
Okay, so my suggestion would be that down the bottom of every agenda, we have the items that have been tabled.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we've got the Barbara and the planning commission's interactive digital map. We've got the new labels to sewer users. We've got the operational stormwater permit tabled and whatever else there might be. So we should, Bill, if you could kind of keep a running tally of those, then we don't forget them.
We're going to need a bigger table.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything for Byron? All right, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi.
Hi there, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Are you and Carrie fighting over the phone?
We are.
You turned your camera off.
Yes, I did.
All right, go ahead.
Not much to report, pretty slow, two weeks again, only had three fire calls. Not much to report. Pretty slow two weeks again. Only had, uh, three fire calls. Uh, one thing I want to bring up is, uh, we put in for a grant a little while ago. I don't know if you guys remember us talking about it for a hose roller.
Yep.
And we got the grant.
All right.
It's a fifty-fifty grant, so we have to pay the whole thing upfront and then they send us half the money back.
How much is that?
The total is nine thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars. So we have to do it before, um, September so, so we can get, uh, our money back. But it, it's actually three hose rollers, one for, um, each size of hose. So we're getting three pieces of equipment. So I just need to know if we can, uh, move forward with this or no.
Uh, yeah, we can do it after July 1st, you said?
Uh, yes. We have to, we have to have it submitted by September.
Okay.
Yeah, a question for the chief. Do, I think we talked about where the money might come from if we got the grant. Would you refresh my memory about where we said the money might come from?
Well, I'd like to use the new equipment fund, which we have a little over thirteen thousand left. So I was kind of hoping we could pay for it out of this year's budget if possible.
I think that's where you should need those. Yeah, we really need those. That's a, that's a back saver. And the, the thing is, is Chris's budget, if, if he does them like everybody else, his current budget reflects a certain amount of expenditures and his future budget, starting July 1st, has a certain amount of expenditures. And I don't think we should try to roll this into the next budget because he didn't plan on this for the next budget. He planned on it for this budget, so. Um, I would move that he be allowed to, uh, pay for those now.
Second.
Motion on the floor, uh, by Joe, second by John Paul to pay for the, um, the new hose rollers that we've received the fifty-fifty match grant on. Um, and we will be reimbursed half of that.
Yeah.
Further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. And that's all I had for tonight.
We have anything for the fire department, folks?
Chris, um, I saw in the email that came out that you're thinking of, uh, having the Dune meeting, monthly meeting, trying to have the meeting, so at McKinley possibly outdoors or whatever. Are you just going to kind of play that by ear for now?
We are playing that by ear. Uh, if it does happen, it'll be either in the truck bay or outside. Um, and it's pretty much just to discuss on how we're going to move forward here, um, with the COVID-19. If we, if people, you know, don't feel comfortable, then we'll, we'll keep going the way we are right now.
Um, operationally, are, are things going okay? You know, you and the officers are able to keep in touch and make sure everything's kind of going okay, even though you don't get to meet formally?
Uh, we are, um, we've been taking, the officer's been taking care of checking all the equipment like we do every month, you know, with all the guys, but we're kind of doing it on our own just so we're not all in the same building together. So everything's being kept up to date and, uh, seems to be working out.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, how's the, um, how's your attendance per call? Is that steady or down due to the virus?
Um, I, it depends on the day still. Uh, it's been kind of low, but we haven't had any calls lately hardly in the last two months, so, uh, I'd say it's about average still.
We have anything for the chief? All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
We'll go from one chief to the next. How about Chief Ed Dumas?
Hey, everybody.
Hey.
I, uh, I got your call, my calls service for the department a little late today to you.
Asked you to start some video.
Carrie, hit mute, Carrie.
So as I, as I was saying, we had, uh, calls and services. I got them there a little late yesterday. Sorry about that. Uh, we had fifty-nine calls for the town officers. ESP's at eleven calls in the town. Uh, also forwarded you a, a quote for, from Sirenette reference to, uh, a case for one of the two thousand fourteen Dodges. It's sixteen forty, thirteen. It's just, uh, and it cost, it's going to cost us the most, probably a hundred and fifty dollars to get it installed uh, at the place on North, excuse me, on South Main Street next to the number one Chinese restaurant. I did, I did get to you late, so if you guys want to take a look at it and pay for it for a couple of weeks, let me know. That's fine.
Yeah, why don't we put it in the packet for two weeks, uh, Billy?
Well, why, why do we have to put it off? Can't we discuss it now?
Did we get any other, um, quotes?
We just got this one from Sirenette, uh, Mary. It's kind of like a specialty item. And, uh, and the other quote, it was a hundred and fifty dollars at the most to get it installed in the back of the cruisers. One cruiser.
Right.
I doubt it.
Okay, but we, are these folks preferred vendors?
It's who we've done a lot of work with, I know that.
That doesn't meet the requirements for quotes, does it, if it's only a hundred and fifty dollars?
No, no, the, the actual cost, Joe, is one thousand six hundred and forty dollars, thirteen cents. And, uh,
Okay.
to install it was going to be anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred dollars if they didn't run it.
Okay. So, so I guess that would require if there was competitive bidding or competitive pricing, not necessarily a bid, right?
I thought we had a five thou, five thousand dollar threshold.
Five thousand dollars to go out to get formal bid? If it's over five thousand, if it's under five thousand but over, uh, whatever the threshold is?
A thousand, Mary.
Okay, um, then we're supposed, then we're supposed to at least call around to see if anybody else, um, besides one vendor, has, um, another option. That's why we went to get the second opinion on the, um, uh, the engineering work for the, the cold storage building.
Yeah. So Ed, is this a Dodge item? Are you buying this from the Dodge people?
No, you buy it from Sirenette. They sell, uh.
So it's that, it, it's aftermarket?
Correct.
Can you, do you know of any other aftermarket companies?
Uh, I don't, but let me, uh, I'll get Ted Washburn to look into it. Maybe we'll find another spot. I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Uh, other things as far as, uh, the police academy goes, they finally opened that building up again. My understanding is, uh, they've, uh, the officers are going to have to stay at the academy with the trainers seven days a week until this training is over with, so they don't get exposed to anything. Uh, we haven't, we haven't even discussed how we're going to get our training done this year because usually we do it as groups. So if we're going to do it in Zoom classes like we're doing here or see what, we'll see what the state comes up with and, uh, where things go in the next couple of months. All that, things are functioning pretty good, uh, but all I have, one time. Any questions for me?
I have one, Ted.
Sure, Joe.
Uh, do you have a projected time or is there something out there statewide as to when, um, you guys will be able to get back into some of the normal things like annoying the speeders and being out on Grove Street and stopping them and giving them autographs?
I want to say after the, what does our town health officer have to say about it? JP?
Yes.
Uh, Joe's asked me, have you heard anything about when we're going to get it back out there and start stopping the public and issuing tickets for, for speeding and whatnot?
No, well, it won't be before May fifteenth, but I think they're trying to develop a protocol for how to handle that. I don't think you're going to see any agencies conducting a lot of traffic stops for a little while.
I know that, uh, the sheriff's department, Kevin Gino, said something about after, I think, the one they want or something on the, I think it's the twentieth or twenty-first of May for clicking the ticket. That's one, so it's coming up pretty soon, I know that. And I know that if we have called where the officers have to go, like Ted had a DUI, he dealt with that. Uh, two things we've, that they've had to do that, that they are, are doing what they have to do to get the job done.
Yeah, yeah.
JP, do you have a plan for putting the, uh, speed cart back out there? Um, it slows them down for like two or three seconds.
I do. I do have a plan and, and you should see that happening this week.
Okay, um, it, it's just that I've, I've really noticed that it's really quite noticeable and now that they've started construction on Route Seven in Pittsburgh, I anticipate a real major issue here on Grove Street.
What, what would your suggestion be as to the best placement, Joe?
Uh, it, it's any place where you got, you know, be either here at the farm or up by Gallopo somewhere. Um, I don't know if traffic is going to be, start going down like Pinnacle Ridge and, and missing, you know, get back on the seven. Usually once they get on here, um, it, it's really hard to pinpoint a good spot.
Yeah.
I do know that in the future, and once Eddie's department can get back up to speed and be out there, that the ideal setup for that, uh, speed cart is have the, uh, cruiser set up once in a while, what I would say, downwind of it. So if it's on Grove Street and they're headed north, they would want to be up there by Gallopo's if it's here. Because what they do is as soon as they go by the speed cart, when you had it by the barn, when they go by my trailer, they're going so fast you can't even hardly see them. So that, that's just a thought for, for our police department, how to work within conjunction of that because it'll be a real startling eye-opener for a lot of people that you guys are running radar when that car's out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, and I'm sure that Mary's got the same problem down on the Creek Road and anybody that lives on the East Pittsburgh Road, everybody's got the same complaint now.
So is the post road by the school. I got one today.
Yep. And, you know, and the public is not, they're not dumb out there. They know you guys aren't doing any, you know, law enforcement for traffic stuff. So they're just taking advantage of it now big time.
I know that too.
It's hard to watch.
Thanks for the good job, Eddie.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, any other questions for the PD? All right, John Paul Fingman, town health, uh, officer, any update for us?
No, nothing other than what we've been talking currently on. It looks like our plans are in place to, uh, proceed, so we're in good shape.
Okay. Um, any committee meeting updates that we haven't discussed? Any update on the project list?
What's the status, Josh, on the, uh, water line, Ranberry Road?
So that's tomorrow, right, Billy?
Yes.
Tomorrow, we're signing the contract. You had, uh, had voted to have me sign the contract on behalf of the board. And that's the, what, what time here tomorrow, Bill?
Three PM.
Three PM.
And, uh, do they have some kind of projected start date to work within the new guidelines in the state? Or will you find that out tomorrow?
Well, I think I'll find out more tomorrow. I did, Robert Clark did share with us at one point that, um, and maybe it was through email to Bill and I, but they felt like they wanted to, they were going to start as soon as possible, but there was some, maybe some of the raw materials were held up due to COVID. So they were trying to figure out, figure out pipes and things like that at this time.
Okay. You don't know if they're buying the pipe locally from Redhead Supply or down there on Park Street, do you? We don't know where they're actually getting it.
Don't, don't know, but I can ask. What's the name of the place you just mentioned, Joe?
I believe it's Redhead. Is that right, Byron?
No, it's Ferguson.
Ferguson, used to be Redhead. Yeah, Ferguson's down there on Park Street. I was talking to Mike that, um, owns that and I was just asking him, uh, if, uh, you know, they had put in an order, anybody had put in an order for that and they hadn't as of about, uh, three weeks ago, so I was just curious.
Wouldn't surprise me if maybe they were getting it through, uh, web.
Okay.
I'll ask the question tomorrow, Joe.
All right, thank you.
All right, under, uh, under new business, um, the, uh, board to discuss the current status of COVID, where we've beat that to death. Board to discuss renewal of federal grant program management fee. That was in the packet, correct, Bill?
Yes, so that was, uh, brought up, uh, a few meetings ago and, um, we had, we have a, there was an extension to the deadline, uh, which is, uh, now July fourteenth. Uh, it does take some time to get this process done, so I, I was asked to put it on the agenda for this meeting, uh, so, uh, you have that as number two. Uh, so the first part of that, uh, it shows when our, um, uh, program expires, which is July fourteenth. And then on, uh, the other page, uh, it gives the three options for, uh, renewing.
Those materials look like a scam.
We had used them once or twice before, Bill, and it was a big help, right?
We.
We had used them for the, um, school resource officer grant, hadn't we?
Yes.
And it turned out to be way more efficient than our, um, town employees doing all of the paperwork, um, than to have these folks do it. And now with some of the federal money loosening up and coming through, it might be useful to have these folks ready to go again.
Yeah, there are some grants out there. They're getting sent out quite a bit actually, and it talks about, uh, that if you don't have a valid registration, so it's the cage codes and things like that in there. If you don't have valid codes, you, you don't even get, you don't even make it past the first round.
Right. So I would move that we approve. Let's do one year for three ninety-nine.
Motion by Mary, is there a second? Second by Sharon for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I ask where you would like it to come from?
Uh, professional services.
Okay.
That would do, yeah.
Got it? Uh, C, you can ignore, I apparently gave it twice, so you can move on from that one.
Yeah, and then, uh, we had a, a budget status on our desk. Did, uh, any board members see anything that jumped out at them? Okay. We have on my desk a, in packet number four is a bill from, uh, Weber Chapman and, uh, Cupfer for thirteen fifty. This is in regards to, uh, the tax, uh, sale. What was the board's pleasure with this? I think we talked about this two weeks ago, correct? And we said we're going to put it off?
Yeah, that's, that's from, uh, uh, Jim Schultz for, uh, the Business Room Four property.
Move to approve.
Motion by JP, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sharon for discussion?
Question, is this approval just that the town's going to pick up the cost or is this going to be part of, uh, reimbursed by the delinquent tax collector when the sale occurs? Or is this a cost that must be paid for, um, by whoever purchases the property? Do we know those things?
I'm just reading the statute here, Mary. Did you see on the back, there was a statute attached?
Mm-hmm, and it said the select board may.
Uh, number five, when the, when the author, when authorized by the select board expenses actually and reasonably incurred by the tax collector for legal assistance in the preparation for our. actually and reasonably incurred by the tax collector for legal assistance in the preparation for our conduct to tax sale, provided that the expenses shall not exceed fifteen percent of the uncollected tax. Is that the, is that the section you're referencing?
Yeah, I assume so, that was the statute that was attached and I read it.
Yeah.
Josh, can, this is Carrie, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Um, so, um, just a little bit of information that may help your decision on this. Um, I was in the office for a little bit with Mary Delene, who is the tax collector in Proctor as well. Um, and I asked her about how she handles this in her town, because she has Gary Cupford as well. Um, and I just, I just wanted to put out what she told me and this is just because I, it, it's helpful to learn these things. Um, this is a bill for the record research, um, so that the whole process can get going on the tax sale. Um, and in the past with her, um, the town of Proctor picks up that bill because it was necessary to get the entire thing going, um, the record research. Um, so that was what she said, that Proctor picks up that bill, um, for record research, um, in, in, in the past for her.
Well, when you say picked up, that doesn't mean that they don't get reimbursed once the property is sold, if the town lien is acted upon.
Right.
I mean, I would expect we, we get our costs back.
I think I agree with you, yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Jim Schultz here.
Go ahead Jim.
That is correct, and at this point, the, um, fifteen percent of the currently due taxes on those three parcels of property is over five thousand dollars. So, um, his expenses should be covered with any, without any issue.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um, the only, uh, the only thing I was gonna bring up under new business, um, and then we'll go around the horn. Um, I had represented all of us, uh, I had been invited in very short notice to a seven AM call yesterday morning with General Electric, uh, where they broke the news of the unfortunate two hundred and fifty plus job layoff, um, that is occurring now, uh, due to, due to COVID and, uh, the, um, I was surprised to see that it wasn't in the paper today, um, but, uh, so that is, that is, um, going to be a permanent layoff until obviously, uh, the economy can turn and things can maybe go back to somewhat normal, uh, down the road. But unfortunate, we know how, how it's going to affect our local economy, we know that many of these people probably reside in Rutland Town, so our hearts go out to them and, uh, it once again just shows that unfortunately, nobody is going to, um, be safe from, from this virus in one way or the other. You know, regardless, you don't pray to God, you don't get the virus, but it's affecting business and jobs and our economy and our livelihoods, so we're, we're thinking, as a town, we're thinking of all those folks who are, we're, uh, really up against it now because of this, so. Um, was there any other new business that didn't come before the board? Any old business that needs for the board? Uh, Sharon, anything for us?
Nope.
Mary?
No.
Uh, Joe DiNardo?
All good.
John Paul?
All set.
Department heads, final thoughts?
Uh, yeah, one thing I'd like to just mention, uh, some budget time, uh, this fall, I don't know if it wants to be brought up with the transfer committee or transfer safety committee or with the highway committee, but let's talk about, uh, perhaps a little different method of taking care of the brush up there at Norton Park. I've got a few ideas and we'll, we'll run it by, uh, the appropriate committee at, at that time. Does that sound okay?
We had a little brush fire up there, right Byron?
Maybe it was a controlled burn, I don't know.
Alright.
Controlled by me, it was controlled by Mother Nature, I think.
Bill Sweet, take the note and, uh, we'll remember to talk about it in the fall, okay?
Sounds good.
Alright everyone, well, we're, we're two weeks closer to hopefully, uh, you know, being able to meet, uh, in person and socially distance and keep ourselves safe, so we'll, we'll talk about that down the road. But until we meet again, everyone be safe and healthy and thanks for tuning in tonight. Did we vote to adjourn yet?
No.
Alright.
I make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Sharon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, good night everyone, thank you.